That was perfect timing. All our technology came up on time and it's seven o'clock. And we are gathered here today for our special committee of the whole. We are also gathered here on the traditional territories of the coast and straight sailors. People known today as Lulukwengan speaking people or the Songhees in the Esquire Malt First Nations. And we recognize that their connection to these lands continue to this day. Also want to point out, although there's no public in our chambers tonight, that this is livestreamed. So if you're watching at home, it's live, but it'll also be archived for future viewing purposes. So with that, we have a single item agenda tonight. I want to just point out that you can call in as committee of the whole. We will have opportunity for public input. That phone number is 250-598-3311. And it'll be put on hold until we get to that public input portion. The number again, 250-598-3311. And a portion, the early portion of this meeting will be following a presentation. That presentation is available at our meetings and agendas page on the oakbay.ca website. So if you want to follow along and see what we're looking at, the entire presentation is located there. Again, that's just go to oakbay.ca and find the meetings and agendas page. And under today's agenda, you'll see a presentation attachment that you can open up separately from the agenda. That is the process we have here tonight. We are missing one counselor tonight for for personal reasons. But with balance of us are here and ready to kick it off. We should probably, I guess we can pretty much just go straight to Ms. Varela, our chief administrative officer, who is going to be walking us through. We're today, tonight addressing the draft council procedures by law. And I assume you're going to give a little bit of a history on this, so I won't. So welcome, Ms. Varela.
Thank you, your worship. So tonight's presentation that I hope people can access online builds on a presentation that staff presented to council, sitting as committee of the whole in December of 2019. So at that presentation, we really dug down and got into the sections and the line by line. We took some general direction, some general and some specific direction from council at that time. We've incorporated that and then we've continued to build the bylaws as we've moved forward. Those changes are summarized for council sitting as committee of the whole tonight in an appendix to the staff memorandum. So we'll be drawing your attention to those. Please don't think that list is absolutely exhaustive. It was the big highlights, but again, as you're, as you're working through a document of this complexity, there could be minor changes that we missed. So staff, welcome all input, both from the public and council tonight as we continue to work through this. So again, building on the December 2019 review, which seems like years ago, not merely months, but here we go. So this is a slide that council and the public saw in 2019. It really talks about what is the function of a procedure by law? So to remind everyone that the community charter does require that council has a bylaw to establish the procedures of how it follows or carries out its business. The procedure by law is not a standalone tool. It works in conjunction with the community charter and the local government act. And there are companion documents, what we would consider companion documents, such as the committee and commission policy that council recently adopted, district guidelines that go along with this bylaw that are currently being developed, other tools such as the land use procedures and fees by law, Robert's Rules of Order and a multitude of others. So again, it's really important to understand that this bylaw is not meant to do all things for all processes. So again, to reiterate the goals as we moved through crafting this bylaw, what did we look to do? So we wanted to reexamine practices for optimization, improving flow of information, flexibility, managing procedural risk. We wanted to create clarity of process for ease of understanding and transparency. And a key piece of this is maximizing public input into the district's business at the right time and in the right forum. We also wanted to create adherence to legislation and best practices. So again, to emphasize, there are many pieces of the puzzle for how the district carries out its business. What we'd like to do a better job at is creating more educational and communication pieces. This could be done through a refresh of the municipal website that council has directed staff to look at in 2021. We've moved to bang the table. That too has been a new approach for the district. So it's that idea of being innovative and agile and saying, how can we do a better job of communicating and educating the public? We know we can do that with supporting learning with visual references, which we try to do as we've shifted to a PowerPoint presentation for big pieces that the district has to deal with, such as we're doing tonight. We're shifting to a review and amend, not a break fix. So just as council is trying to be proactive with its asset management and its infrastructure, so too do we want to be agile with our regulatory tools. So if we look at the history of the procedure by law, in 1934, it was first drafted. 1999, it was then revamped. And we brought it back for revision in 2019 and 2020. Of course, there were amendments along the way, but these are the big overhauls for this tool. We also recognize as we develop tools, whether they're policies, procedures, bylaws. Again, this is a long game for the district. And I think council and staff have both committed and are delivering on the idea of continual improvement. We can't wait until we have all pieces completed and bring that forward for council and public consideration at that time. We'd look like we were never doing anything. And by the time you had all your pieces done, you'd probably be starting over again with something that was outdated. So there's no reason that, just as council directed to develop the policy, those feed into the terms of reference and establishing bylaws or committees and commissions. Same with this procedure by law speaks to committees and commissions. We have other companion documents that are coming, multiple pieces. But I think the big thing that we have to do is to create linkages between these tools. And that's about how we further optimize our practices while enhancing ease of understanding. So it's just naming that the fact that we know we don't have all the pieces. We know this is a long game. We also know we're committed to continuous improvement.
Ms. Varela, I'm just going to interrupt for a second, just in case anybody's joined us late on the, on this meeting. If you are at home and you're wondering if there's more to this than just the words, there is in fact a report which has the, the full presentation that we're talking to here. Go to the meetings and agenda section of the oakbay.ca website. And there you can open up the report and, and follow along. We're currently on page, around page, I don't actually have it on here, but probably around page seven right now of that, of that, of that presentation. So just if anybody's following at home, that's, that's what we're doing at this point. Thank you, Ms. Varela.
Thank you, your worship. So when we talk about those pieces of the puzzle and how we commit to improving ease of understanding, one of the things that we're developing right now are companion guidelines to go along with this procedure by law. And these are really operational tools that relate to governance pieces. And they also impact service levels. So the ones that we're currently working on, we have five of them. We're working on a public correspondence guideline, an agenda publication guideline, public hearing guidelines, an advisory body agenda publication guideline and minute guidelines. And I put some stars under the minute guidelines because I wanted to use this as an example of, well, how do we decide what a good guideline is? And so for the, the minute guideline, we would actually look to Ellie Mina, who is a local government guru and in Robert Rules of Order and Minute Taking. We'd look to the corporate officers forum to say what they're presenting as best practices, things like that. So these guidelines are actually founded in best practices. And we'll bring those back and, and let both the public and council know how we're rolling those pieces out. So one other thing I'd like to illustrate here is the agenda publication guideline. So you'll see your procedure by law, for example, speaks to 24 hours before a meeting. You have to have an agenda out. We know that isn't the best practice we want to adhere to. So months ago, staff shifted to producing the agenda for meetings on a Wednesday for a Monday meeting. Cause council had said, we want to give the public more, more time. But again, create the flexibility, create your best practices, stick to legislated requirements in your bylaw where possible. Okay? Inform stakeholders. So as we were working on this bylaw, we really prioritized the idea of recognizing that an informed public is one that knows where to weigh in, when to weigh in and how to provide their input. Public input is key to the business of the district. And I think one of the things that we can improve a lot on is focusing the public input where it matters the most. So we want to make sure that when someone puts in a piece of correspondence, for example, on a land use application, ideally, they would like that included in the public hearing binder as part of the public record. That happens at a defined point in the land use process. And I don't think the public is necessarily aware of where that trigger is. So again, as we start to move through this, we talk about the pieces. We talk about where we target public input to maximize that. You'll see, when I look at some of the pieces that I'm seeing right now, things like freedom of information requests for applications we don't even have in the hopper. Because the public doesn't have the benefit of an application tracker. So again, another piece that we want to start working on to prioritize how we keep the public informed and where they should be weighing in. We also see the development of informed stakeholders. Really, it's about relationship building between the district and the community. And again, we have a lot of work to do here, but I think you have a really strong commitment, both from council and from staff. And even tonight, the, the public input that we saw with the procedure by law, there were some really thoughtful comments made by the, the public tonight that I'd like to, to thank those people for who wrote in. Even as we were developing this presentation, we thought about the questions that were being asked by the public. And so again, thank you for that thoughtful input because that's how we all get better together. We also want to make sure that council and the public both feel confident about where, when and how council weighs in. So under the new procedure by law, we've given you a clause for notice of motion. And we've said, ideally, we would like to see that at committee of the whole. And then the matter is tackled at a following council meeting. We also know that there could be things that come up that are time sensitive or urgent, those sorts of things. So we've given a safety valve or a pressure release valve, if you will, that you could also bring forward notice of motions under new business at a council meeting. It wouldn't be your normal course of business. But if the matter was time sensitive or urgent, it gives council that flexibility. Cause I think that's what we're also hoping for. I think another key part of transparency and accountability is really educating people about the complexity of council's decision making process. And both the council and public will have seen this, this visual before, but I find it's a really useful one to keep coming back to. So council sitting and making decisions actually takes information and considers a lot of pieces. So on that graphic, you'll see advisory bodies, staff, the public. And those people could all have recommendations and opinions that are very different from each other. But again, for council's decision making, it's not about consensus from sources of information. It's about depth of input and information. And then council has a difficult job of taking those recommendations, listening to what the public has to say, looking at the plans and policies that your public has already weighed in on, considering regulations and land use. So there could be other factors that are region wide or even provincial wide. So again, we have to acknowledge this is complex. And council doesn't base its decision making on any one source. I always say that, you know, when the election occurs, you folks have the difficult job of transitioning from representing the people who elected you to office to actually representing the community as a whole. And I think part of, of juggling this decision making is exactly that. Very diverse group of stakeholders that you now represent. So again, that, that idea about increased opportunities for public input, more opportunities, more focus is what this bylaw gives you. And, and we'll go to the next slide in just a second to talk about this. But you'll see definitions for things like presentation, delegation, public input and question period. And we're also differentiating from public input on agenda items and the public hearing process. Because again, right now, you have the public weighing in at a committee of the whole. And it almost feels like you're having a public hearing that isn't a public hearing. We really need to manage the risk around that, focus public input where it goes and make sure there's opportunity for a lot of it. So let's. If you don't mind holding it, because it's sometimes what I find councillor Zelka is that we'll come back and I'll have answered it. So increased opportunity for public input. The current bylaw, what you have right now allows for 20 minutes at council, three minutes per person. Agenda items at committee of the whole, correspondence on any item at any time and presentations by organizations, 10 minutes. Okay? We haven't included in here the public hearing process because that's legislated. And I'm also going to speak to an applicant hosted information meeting in another part of the presentation. So I'll get you to hold your thought on that as well. With the proposed draft by law, what we're looking at is input on agenda items with time limit of three minutes at council, 30 minutes at committee of the whole with three minutes per person. You can also speak to specific agenda items at committee of the whole with three minutes. And then we've broken out delegation at committee of the whole and then a presentation at council. So the difference there is a delegation is someone who would say, I want to speak to council sitting as committee of the whole for more than three minutes. And so we'd actually have an application process that someone could say, I would like to speak on this matter. And you actually get slotted in for a time period. We can accommodate a presentation easily if someone wants to. So again, improving that interface. A presentation appears at a council meeting. And so a presentation is by invitation. So for example, if we had invited the Chamber of Commerce to make a presentation, if we had invited South Island Prosperity to make a presentation, then they actually get an allocated time and that appears at council, which is more the decision making body when council sits as council rather than as committee of the whole. So I think I'll move forward from there, Deb. The other piece about transparency and accountability is recognizing that we need to streamline and optimize our practices and processes. And to do that, we want to maximize both staff's volunteers and the public's input and time. And we do that in this bylaw through things like role clarification, acknowledging that advisory bodies will work within mandates that are established by council. We want process clarity. So again, that idea of where are we speaking to what? And then we want to make linkages to council priorities and initiatives as we continue to build on, on this bylaw. The other thing we want to do, and we've learned a lot of during this time of pandemic, is that we want to create opportunities for flexibility and adaptability as conditions require. If anyone had told us how adaptive we'd have to, had to be come a year ago, we would have been shocked. So certainly as we were building this bylaw, we've continued to think, how do we bridge that balancing act of creating certainty while allowing flexibility? So again, the public wants to know where and when and how. We have to acknowledge that there's always things that could be time sensitive, urgent. And we can layer on companion documents. So you know, what we have to achieve versus what we want to achieve. Think back to that agenda publication timeline. Okay? The other thing that we've included in this document is rules of conduct for all stakeholders. And this is essentially a new section and it reflects the respectful workplace legislation, council code of conduct and more. And we've really made sure that this involves everyone who comes to do business at the district. So not only staff, members of the public, you have contractors, you have elected officials, anyone who has an interface with the district now has rules of conduct. Committees and commissions will be receiving respectful workplace training as well. And, and we did a trial with a couple chairs and, and liaisons. I believe we were still in 2019 then. And so, so building on that, the public hearing forum. And I think the great thing about this is that with good conduct, that equates to good decision making and good governance. So you'll have staff that are more innovative because there's less risk. You'll have a public that will more openly share diverse opinions because people are treated respectfully and allowed to speak in that, in that way. And I think this council has a lot to be proud of when we talk about setting a tone at the top for how the district carries out its business. Committees and commissions, we certainly building on the policy that council has already approved. We've certainly added some more depth to how the procedure by law speaks to committees and commissions. And we did it with the foundational knowledge, two things really, that advisory bodies exist to augment council's decision making. The other thing that we also recognize is that volunteerism is a profound way to contribute to the community. And so as council starts to develop those new terms of reference, the establishing bylaws, sets mandates, thinks, thinks about those things. We want the public to know that both of those pieces are top of mind. We also know that meetings are meetings. And so one of the practices that we're, we're changing or we have changed in the district is that task forces or subcommittees or any of those things are actually an extension of an advisory body. And when you talk about transparency and accountability, we need to acknowledge that meetings are meetings. And if there is a quorum held, then that has to be a properly advertised meeting. There has to be an agenda. There has to be minutes taken. And that's a big step forward for transparency and accountability is to make sure those meetings actually all hit the public record. We want to have clear mandates. And one of the things when we talk about clear mandates or role clarification, you know, there's almost an instinctual response to, well, that's going to take away all the creativity and innovation. And you know, it's going to get bureaucratic. And, and so the example I like to use is the, the, I call it the COCOG, the Climate Community Climate Action Working Group. And so council established this advisory body with the idea that they wanted them to be creative. They wanted them to be able to take public input. There was a rationale for that. And the terms of reference that council endorsed reflected that. So when we talk about mandates or, or role clarification, I don't want it to feel oppressive. It's really just council deciding what it needs out of its advisory bodies to augment their council decision making. You also have the guidelines that we talked about. And then we also have the standalone committee and commission policy. So now that that's been finalized, you know, staff has been working on those terms of reference and council will be making decisions on what it needs out of those advisory bodies shortly. The IAP2 framework, again, this is a good example of how the procedure by law doesn't have to contain everything. So one of the things that we had heard is that we wanted to use the IAP2 framework for defining how public participation was going to happen. And so we haven't built this into our procedure by law. But what you've probably noticed is that our staff reports actually talk about the IAP2. So are we informing? Are we consulting? If it was an OCP initiative, we'd be collaborating, right? So again, using the tools and best practices rather than, it doesn't all have to be in the procedure by law. So what we've heard, as I've looked at the, the input from the public, and I know this has long been an informal discussion around the council table is we're hearing there's a desire for early concept consultation. And I'm stealing a line out of the, a piece of the public correspondence. But we're hearing there's a desire for early concept consultation with affected neighbors when it comes to land use applications. So that's something council wants to consider. The, the procedure by law is not the mechanism to outline this opportunity. So again, when I talk about pieces of the puzzle, this isn't the piece for it. However, where you will use that tool or create that tool, if council so directs, is in revising the land use application process to provide for that early public input to the applicant via an applicant hosted information meeting. Okay? And this process is actually going to be finalized in a separate document for council's consideration. But we will commit to you that you'll have that piece of the puzzle prior to adoption of this by law. Okay? I'm not promising you're going to have the whole revised land use procedure by law, but we can talk about that tool. So again, the council procedure by law is part of a continuum of improvement. It is not all things to everyone or to every need in this district. It's one piece of a puzzle. And I'd like to remind both council and the public that it is not cast in stone. This by law is subject to change and amendment when you find a piece of it isn't working for you. You know, in theory, again, we could revise a bylaw of this nature, which doesn't require a public hearing in four weeks. You could hit your statutory advertising. So if there's a piece that's not working for you on the ground, it's a tool. And, and we can change that tool because this is all about making it work for you and making it work for the public. Your worship, if you'd like to either turn to your, your committee of the whole or if you'd like to invite the public to comment.
I think we'll spend, it's 7:25 right now. I think what I might do is just provide a timeframe. And then what, at 7:45, I'll go out and invite the public to, to call in. The number to call in is, and you can call in now and wait if you wish, or call in then. It's 250-598-3311. Again, 250-598-3311. But I think it's worthwhile for, to give this body a chance to have a few questions, clarifications. And maybe at this point, we can deal with the higher level things. Then we can get into some of the line, the line item pieces after the public has had a chance to weigh in. And I will say, I will give it another opportunity for the public to call in and speak to us at the end of the meeting. If there's any, you know, ideas or thoughts that people have had listening, they can call in at that time as well. I saw councillor Zelka's hand go up when I first started talking and then I'll go to councillor Patterson. Go ahead councillor Zelka.
Thank you very much Chair. And it's more just a clarification that at least at this point. I've heard you say at this meeting and at other meetings that our committee of the whole to you seems more like a public hearing. I don't understand that because I see them as very different things. I experience them as very different things and maybe I'm wearing different hats. So that's why. But what do you mean when you say that?
So there's actually a legislated spot where the public needs to weigh in. And so once a, an application has been finalized, I think it's another bit of the dance. I don't think it's just one piece councillor Zelka. I think there's a lot of confusion. The public doesn't understand how an application is developed. So there's a lot of back and forth between staff, the applicant, over to the advisory body. It weighs in. Absolutely. So there's the idea that we really want to direct public input on a finalized application that council says, we're confident enough that this product has enough merit to move forward for public input. That actually happens in the land use application process when council gives a bylaw first and second reading. So one of the things I've heard just informally from the public is that, you know, once something receives first and second reading, it's on its way to being approved. And I think it's one of the notions we have to challenge here. A bylaw that receives first and second reading is a bylaw that council has decided has enough merit to go get public input. So you actually, once, once council has a bylaw that they've said, okay, yep, first and second reading. So rezoning, whatever it is. Then that's where we want the public to start writing. They, they participate through the public hearing and it all becomes part of the public record. Right? So when you have the council, here, here's a symptom of a public that doesn't understand the process is when you have freedom of information requests on an application that the district doesn't even have. There's a couple pieces to that. That tells me something's wrong. Right? If, if, maybe I'll defer to the director of planning because I know we've had a lot of conversation on this. But the idea that we want to channel public input where it belongs, which is public hearing. We want to give the public opportunity to influence an application early through speaking with the applicant, right? So we've talked about that meeting. We want people to not be writing in on an application that might not even be the application that council considers. Cause it's exhausting if it goes on for months for the public. You want them to provide comment on what council is actually going to consider. And so when I look at the process, I feel bad for the public right now because people don't know where, when and how to weigh in because they're doing it from beginning to end. So that's a symptom.
I'm going to actually go back to councillor Zelka because you sound like you wanted to clarify.
Yeah. And listen, you, you have actually helped clarify quite a fair bit. It's not just the public who doesn't understand. My, my experience is that previous councils haven't understand what second reading is all about. Cause I see what the, what the provinces defined it. And then I've seen how Book Bay has implemented it. I'm going like, when first, second reading, first, second and third reading is done like that. And it's like, the public never had a chance to do anything. Yeah, it's been confusing for me as well. So if there's an opportunity to re, re, fully redefine that, then I think that might help a lot. Thank you.
And if I could just add one thing. And if I could just add one thing, your worship, one of the things that's also confusing is when we talk about different bylaws, because there's some bylaws you can actually do multiple readings like that at, and then there's others that you, you don't. So again, there's complex, but complexities to it, but I think we have to do a better job of articulating that. And for me to talk about first and second reading, recognizing that isn't, isn't um, a fait accompli for approval, it's really saying that project has enough merit to be taken to the public for comment. It, it's a bit of naming a gorilla in the room when it, when it comes to practice in Oak Bay, but I think that's really a shift that we have to get to. And there's going to be some educational pieces that have to go along with that.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. I think it's important to note, uh, and it was highlighted in the documents, thank you for the, the, the flow chart models where it goes to that first and second reading. That's where the debate first happens. And at that point, council can redirect it back to staff, they can decline it, or if they feel it has merit, then it goes on to that public input process. So it actually has an extra level of filter at that point of decision making, decide at that point if it goes forward or needs more information. So, thank you. Any, uh, other, councillor Patterson, you done councillor Zelka? Thank you councillor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you to Ms. Varela. Um, and thank you so much for the presentation, Ms. Varela. It's, I, I, I don't know that I'm totally clear on everything, but the, the light is starting to get brighter, I can put it that way. Um, a couple of the things that you touched on, uh, if I can go back to, um, the procedures bylaw talks about a delegation to council as you reviewed. Um, uh, and, and so it goes to the council meeting and the council gets the present, the presentation from the delegation. Now.
Just for clarification, it goes to committee of the whole.
Okay, it goes to committee of the whole. Um, and so when it goes to committee of the whole, the public may not be fully informed of what that is. You'll see it on the agenda and, and certainly I, I must add, I think our agenda packages um, are, are a lot more fulsome in, in describing what it's going to be. It used to, you know, it used to be a guessing game as to what is, what did that mean? Um, and so, so that, that is improving. But if it comes to council and council um, is thinking one way or another, at what point then would the public weigh on, weigh in on what they hear about what has been presented at committee of the whole? I mean, some people may be in the room, but until they hear the presentation, they may not, you know, you don't have an idea what you want to comment.
I think it would, your worship, sorry, um, I think it would depend on uh, what council decided to do or council sitting as committee of the whole wanted to do with that delegation. So uh, you could direct staff just to um, write a piece of correspondence. You could just receive the delegation and not action it. You could refer the matter uh, to staff for a report. You could refer the matter to council for action. So you have lots of choices uh, on what you would do with an item. Uh, it's just what council uh, sitting as committee of the whole would determine would be the most appropriate action. So it would depend if someone, so for example, uh, a delegation came forward to uh, talk about an environmental initiative. Um, council sitting as committee of the whole could say, you know what, we actually want a, a, this to be action. We want a staff report. We want more information. Then you would direct accordingly, staff. So again, it, sometimes it's just a request for a piece of correspondence. Sometimes it's um, it, you could have a delegation on so many, so many matters.
I just want to add one thing to your thing because I think it's important in this is, uh, because I went through this sort of as a chair, how would I manage? Uh, one of the things that, uh, you know, I, I wanted to make sure of was that the delegations were early, mayor and council had their verbal reports. And then we got, that came before the public comment piece, and then after that is new business. So we have the, a, a capacity to hear from every capacity, whether that's a, a report from another committee or commission or from a, an outside agency from council or from a delegation or from the public. And then notices, motions comes, so at that point council can, can action anything in that series of inputs to go forward to council or to staff for direction. So I think that, that, that order is a critical part of that, of that piece of, to answer that question.
Thank you, Mayor, for that clarification, your, your piece of it, that it all helps. Um, and, and, but I think this is very, really important to the public to, to understand how this is all coming together. Um, the uh, uh, the other piece I wanted to um, ask about is the discussion that um, on this um, revising the land use bylaw so that it would provide for applicant um, uh, communication with the community prior to um, it going through the application process to council. In Oak Bay, many of the applications are single residence applications. Can we clarify, um, is, does this, will this include all applications even down to a single residents? Or is it for more, more major projects? Can we just be a little more um, informative about that?
Yeah, let's do that. I think it's an important part of the question, Mr. Anderson. Uh, for those at home, Mr. Anderson or Director of Building and Planning.
Hey everybody. Uh, through you Chair. Uh, yeah, the idea of the, the applicant information meeting is, is certainly to focus on what we refer to as major applications. It would be applications that, that um, for example, a rezoning application, uh, community plan amendment application. Um, we would, we would look to, to have those types of applications um, seek uh, input and, and provide information as part of those meetings at an early stage in, in the process. We would see that occurring before the application proceeds to the advisory planning commission, for example, for rezoning. But what we would not see, and those are applications that do go through public hearing. So what we would not see is having these meetings for building permit, development permit, um, um, air alteration permit, those, those types of um, applications are a more technical process and there are ones that are deliberated on by advisor committees and then, and then decided upon by council. So they're, they're not the ones that are seeking that broader um, legislated public input. And so the, the intent is really to focus, I would say, on the rezoning applications for these meetings that we're talking about.
And thank you, thank you for that explanation. Uh, Mayor, if I can continue, one last, one last question. Um, and that is about, we have the, the procedure bylaw that guides committee and commission uh, procedure. We also just adopted a policy for committee and commissions procedures. Um, and the terms of reference, as you stated, are just to, are still to come. Can you explain the, the rationale for developing the procedure bylaw, including the procedures for committees and commissions and the policy? Um, I, I think there, there may be some uh, feeling that it's, it, it, there, there's a lot of information that is perhaps duplicated or um, or it's just a, a very, you know, it's complex to know which document they go to first, which, which, how the hierarchy of it is and the rationale.
That one goes to Ms. Varela.
And I'll look to Ms. Hopkins as my wingman on this. Um, but I think the, the idea is again, the procedure bylaw is about the mechanics of how the business is, is carried out. Uh, the policy uh, was really the grounding upon which we could develop terms of reference and establishing bylaws. And those terms of reference and establishing bylaws will, um, council will determine what the mandate of those advisory bodies are through that. So um, if you'd uh, bear with me, your worship, I, I think Ms. Hopkins can probably augment that explanation.
Go ahead, Ms. Hopkins.
Thank you, your worship. Um, Ms. Varely did a great job. One of the things I would say about that policy though is uh, the, the procedure bylaw is a big picture up here. These are the mechanics, uh, things that must be done. And the policy gets into much more granular detail. So for one, an example of this would be how does the committee make a recommendation to council? You won't find that in the procedure bylaw, you'll find that in the policy. So the two work in tandem, um, but the procedure bylaw is a much higher um, authority over, and then how those committees and commissions uh, fit into the picture. And then the policy itself does much more detailed analysis and outlining of, of actually how those committees are going and commissions will function.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Patterson. Are there other questions or, yeah councillor Green?
Um, I have a number of questions, not a number of questions, I have some comments, but I'll save those. Um, thank you very much for this work. It's, I, I know it's a lot and uh, and, and as you say, granular in many respects. So just a question under fifty-one point zero under agenda. You have the, you show the mayor, I believe, as a voting member, not only as an ex officio member of all committees and commissions, but also as a voting member. And I just wanted to question that. Um, my understanding was ex officio, yes, but I didn't realize the mayor would be voting, could vote at committee and commission uh, meetings. I think we had talked about that earlier about the fact that I, I know I said that I wasn't comfortable with a voting role as a liaison, so I'm just wondering how this works for the mayor. Mayor position, sorry.
Councillor, councillor Green, can I, sorry, what, what section was that?
Was it fifty-one point one?
Okay.
Hang on, am I in the right?
No.
Five, five? Sorry.
Oh, five, five point three.
Five, five, sorry, five, five, yep. Oh no, I know what it was. Under fifty-one point one, the role of the mayor in helping to develop the agenda is not explicit. Um, is that right? Or how does it work?
Sorry councillor Green, could you reiterate?
Under, I, I realize what I, what I was.
Let's deal with the first one first, shall we? That just keeps it very simple. So fifty-five point one, the question is, um, the mayor is, oh sorry, fifty-five point three, it just says mayor is an ex officio, but it is, it, the voting member on the committees and commissions to which the mayor is appointed. So if I'm ex officio, I'm not appointed, is that correct? So it would be a voting member if I was appointed to any meeting? So is that different? So if uh, are all councillors voting members to which they're appointed unless it says so differently in the terms of reference?
Um, so your worship, there are certain um, advisory bodies that you cannot be a voting member on such as the APC. So council through its policy established a council liaison, but that is not a voting member of the APC. Uh, with the heritage commission, you actually split the role and said on non-land use matters, the council liaison could vote, whereas on uh, land use matters, the councillor could not vote. So again, you've differentiated that voting from uh, you've said no to land use matters, which is exactly in accordance with the legislation.
So to councillor Green's question, it says here the mayor can vote, uh, typically my pointed, but it'd be appointed, not ex officio. Ms. Hopkins?
Your worship, um, that is correct. You are only voting on uh, committees to which you have been appointed, not that you were ex officio just by rote of your, your office. Um, but that's another great example of something that you would find in the policy, not in the, and that's outlined in the committee and commission policy, and it's not located in the procedure bylaw. And that's another great example of how those two documents really do work hand in hand.
Uh, your worship, what I could, I, I, I can see why uh, confusion is resulting from the wording in this clause. So staff will flag that for potential revision and clarification. Thank you for that input.
I think it's helpful that just, because they might need to be separated. The, the point that I get to vote on things I'm appointed to and the point that I'm ex officio, or maybe just the two different thoughts perhaps that need to be separated. Thank you councillor Green for that.
Okay, and just my other one at the moment is fifty-one point one under agenda. My question is, it is not explicit in any of the wording that the mayor would be necessarily involved in consulting with or developing with staff the agenda? Now, excuse me, um, so my feeling is it's good practice to have the mayor involved in that process, uh, in terms of at least finalizing the agenda at some stage of the process. So I just wondered, is there a reason why the mayor is not mentioned explicitly?
Uh, so under section fifty-one point one, uh, that actually relates specifically to agendas for committee and commission meetings. Uh, and so that isn't a role that the mayor would uh, play under fifty-one point one. For uh, the agenda as a whole, um, uh, the mayor does weigh in. Uh, we also want to be very clear that the mayor would never um, uh, have the final say on what business actually appeared before council for so consideration. So uh, the mayor couldn't say, I actually don't want that item on the agenda if it was a matter of district business, because that needs to become uh, before the elected body as a whole. So it's a bit of a, a dance, the mayor would never um, structure the agenda, uh, but certainly he's aware of content.
Okay, and I think, um, and I appreciate that, thank you. But I also think that the understanding from the public, often the public feels that the mayor has a really strong hand in that process. So I think it's important for us to clarify, use clarifying language, language to make sure they understand that the mayor does not have that kind of authority. Because I think, I think a lot of people feel that's the case, that, you know, the mayor is intricately involved and does have a final say. So I think it would be important to make that explicit.
I just want to point out councillor Green is bursting the bubble of my mystique here.
Um, I, I just think, one, it's good practice to involve the mayor during the development of an agenda. But if he, and, and I, but I think people misunderstand his advisory function in that process. I think what they think is that ultimately the mayor has the yay or nay on what business appears on the agenda. So I, I just think clarifying language would be helpful in our goal to educate the public. That's all.
So the only place this is mentioned here is under twenty-three point one, is that correct? Where it just talks to the change, any change of order of business would be determined by the corporate officer uh, or by the body of council itself. Is that, is that sort of the place where that decision actually gets controlled?
There might be a couple of other places in the bylaw that we actually say the corporate officer in consultation with the mayor, because again, I think it's a consultative role rather than a that's in or out role. That would be a little bit of an impediment to democracy, I think.
Not arguing. Uh, councillor Green?
I, I don't think I have any more questions at this point. I, I have comments later, but I'll, I'll hold those, thanks.
Uh, so it's seven forty-seven, but I want to just give, uh, we have a couple of councillors haven't had a chance to comment yet. So if you're at home, dial in two five zero five nine eight three three one one, and we will get to you in just a few minutes here. As I'm just going to let councillor Braithwaite and councillor Appleton ask a couple of questions, then we'll go to the public if there's people wish. And again, if you wish to wait towards the end of the meeting, I will ask again for the public input if you want to listen to some more before you, you comment. Councillor Braithwaite?
Um, thank you so much. Um, and thanks to staff as well for, for this. It, a lot of things were clarified for me in your report, so I, I appreciate that. Um, and slide seventeen where, where you talk about the early public input, um, I really appreciate the fact that you've listened and really read the correspondence from residents and picked up on that because that was a, a really big thing. I think that, that, um, that uh, our residents would like um, to be able to have that, uh, that's early, early public input on. So thank you for that. Um, councillor Patterson talked a little bit about um, kind of having uh, the, the process uh, like written out. And, and so it made me think, you know, we have these great um, visuals that you have, and I think there was a mention of this in one of the letters as well. And I'm wondering if it would be advantageous to us to, with every um, agenda, just to have a, a, one or two um, documents that are like linked at the top that show a flow of exactly what will happen, you know, when it's a land use process, here's, when it's a land use um, application, here's the process that it goes through. This is where public input gets put in. This is where, this is what council is looking for. Once council, if a council approves it, it goes off and does this. And if a council doesn't approve it, then this is what happens. I, I don't know whether that would help or not, like it's, it, it's something that we wouldn't have to reinvent it every agenda. We just have to do it once and have a link on the agenda to it. So then people could go and click on that and we wouldn't have to explain it every single time.
It's a, it's an interest, thank you councillor Braithwaite, it's a good idea. I don't think it has to be part of this procedures bylaw, but I think it's something like that would make work, work quite well. Even if we put into our land use applications that flow and we could just highlight the stage that we're at with this particular application each time, uh, might be helpful as well, so people understand where we're at and where their possibility of input would be in that process. Thanks councillor Braithwaite.
Thank you. And then um, I, I did notice that in Mr. Saltanam's um, letter, he talked about subsection fifty-four two, and he talks about it record, referring to a recording secretary and then how, you know, whether it would be a staff person, this, but the recording secretary would just be the staff person, would it not, just to clarify? Or would that be two different people?
Uh, one of the things that we're, uh, we've had discussions with council on, and we actually said, let's play out twenty twenty uh, and look at it for a budget, I mean, twenty twenty-one is a commission and committee clerk. So the idea that it's very difficult as a staff person. So the idea that it's very difficult as a staff person to be taking minutes responding to questions, following the conversation. Staff is, the staff person is really there as a resource to the staff report that's being presented. So just as I'm presenting today, it would be very difficult for me to be taking minutes and capturing all these ideas. There's also a lot of other mechanics behind this. So again, as we talk about making meetings, really meetings, those require agendas, publication, things like that. So we're actually increasing the level of service as we move through tightening up our procedures. And so one of the things we had talked with council about for twenty twenty was the idea that we might need a resource person, and we asked you to say, let's come back and have another discussion with that, about that. So right now, we actually anticipate a clerk being a position.
Thank you. And then lastly, there was also another piece of correspondence where the question was asked, why can't commissions accept written input from the public? And could you just maybe give us your take on that and explain why it can't, or if there's ever a possibility that it could?
Ms. Rella?
Thank you, your worship. So there's a couple of pieces with this. So we wouldn't say that you couldn't as an absolute. So for example, with the Community Climate Action Working Group, I think there was an, actually a mechanism for the public to provide input, because council thought that was valuable. If you had, for example, another advisory body that was dealing with a land use application, and they were having to take in public input, that's really, you want that public input directed to council, not to the advisory body. The advisory body is appointed for a selection of broad community expertise. So it's a specific lens. Back to that idea of a staff report recommendation doesn't have to align with a report or a recommendation from the advisory body. And that might not align with what you hear from the public who actually comes out. So again, they're different sources, and it's really council who's making the decision and needs to weigh the public input. That is not the role of the advisory body in general when it comes to land use applications. You're also, again, run the risk of, are you directing public input to the right place? Because if everybody rode in to the advisory body, that isn't hitting the public hearing binder for the record, because that happens after first and second reading. And don't forget, as someone who would, an applicant who would bring forward an application, they might take away the input that they hear from the public, right? They might take away the input they hear from the advisory body. So by the time council's actually giving first and second reading to a bylaw, that might not be what the original thing was, because the, the application could have been morphed to reflect what was heard, right? Which again, is why we want to give an applicant the benefit of hearing from their neighbors early. Right?
Thank you so much.
Ms. Rella, if I may, just for clarification, because I think there is some nuanced debate about what, there are, there may be, I'm just saying, I'll give an example. Heritage has an application, and someone in the community might have a body of knowledge about the history of the family or something that would be actually relevant to that particular property. So there are things there, but with that, that would not be dealt with here. We're putting the broad strokes here, and that would be a terms of, terms and conditions for that commission or committee, that we have that kind of very specific conversation. Is that correct?
I think so. I think, you know, that's the pieces that we need to look to council for to say, what are you trying to, again, again, if we talk about advisory bodies existing to augment council's decision making, what do you want them to consider or be the, the receiver of information for? And what information do you want directed to you as part of your complex decision making? As a staff person, I wouldn't want to presume that. That's why we bring those terms of reference and establishing bylaws to you to say, what do you actually need from your advisory bodies? And how or if do you want the public to weigh in at that point in the process? Or do you want them to wait to a different process? And those are additional pieces of the puzzle we'll bring forward for your consideration.
Okay, appreciate sort of that clarity about whether that was something we should talk about tonight or something that, that's, that's another evening, much like this, I'm sure. Counselor Appleton, before I go to the public, is there anything you want to throw in here before we go to the public?
Thank you, your worship. I'll be very brief. I just wanted to pick up and reiterate on something that Counselor Braithwaite said, because I agree very much. I, I have seen the correspondence, and I really want to acknowledge the members of the public that have asked questions about the opportunity to interface with committees and commissions, and, and I really strongly support the provision of clarifying information, even just sort of publicizing this slide number eight in your presentation under transparency and accountability, which shows the different roles of those different, those different bodies, that, that one. I, I think that there is potentially a misunderstanding on behalf of some of the members of the public that the ability, the, the lack of ability or the perceived lack of ability to provide input directly to committees and commissions disempowers them or, or removes their voice in order to comment on that specific application. And, and I, that's, that's actually not the case. I think they need to just be reminded of the fact that council weighs all of this, all of this material as part of their decision making. And in fact, having the public comment separately, for want of a better word, from a committee and commission gives us more information, not less information. So I think it's just clarity for the public is really important. I think it's been touched on a couple of times here. So I want to acknowledge people who have raised concerns about not being able to provide that information to committees and commissions, especially about land use applications. But very much concur that if given at the right time and place, then it, it has the proper review, it has the proper impact, for want of a better word. So I just want to acknowledge that. And I did have one brief question. We've touched on the idea of essentially online tools for the district to talk about application tracking and provision of development information. We're, we're updating the website. We have sort of consistent, ongoing issue with updating our technology, and, and we don't have all those tools in place. But I was just wondering whether staff might be able to sort of afford us a a snapshot of, of where we might be at with that, what sort of future resource needs would be, like, at what point would council receive information from staff as to what was required to make that tool really a reality?
Thank you, Counselor Appleton. I may go to Mr. Anderson or Ms. Rella on that one. But I'd actually just like to throw in a little two cents on this as well, because I think for those watching at home and for council, that effort to provide that kind of level of detail in real time to people is part of a lot of the conversations at engineering to provide information on the work that they have going on, building and planning on these applications. So it's more than just this one item. In this case, we're talking about it in the, in the structure of, because it actually has an impact on this procedures bylaw. If that isn't there, then that, it, it, some of the assumptions are that, that, that clarity will be provided as part of this. So Ms. Rella, I'll give it to you, and you can hand it off to other staff if you see fit.
Really, your worship, those items represent an increase in service level, and they will have impact to budget. And so we'll be bringing that forward as part of the strategic initiatives discussion that feed into your budget process. So for example, if there was a price tag associated with a development tracker, we would bring that item as an increased service level forward to council. And then you could decide to resource or not. Same with the website refresh, for example. You know, there can be a significant price tag associated with that, depending on how much of a service level improvement council wants to make. So again, we'll be having those discussions going forward, but council also has the opportunity during that process to say, hey, I'd like to see if there's uptake on X. I'd like to propose that as an enhanced service provision. So this, this doesn't just come from staff. Council also has the opportunity, and certainly as we continue to explore other opportunities for the public to weigh in, they also can make suggestions and, and can provide correspondence right to Oak Bay Council through your email or other means, and you might feed that into those processes.
Thank you. And sorry, I, to the public, anybody watching that was trying, that's been waiting to talk. I said seven forty-five is almost, almost eight. Is there anybody on the line right now that we can, that are interested in speaking?
Your worship, no, no calls.
No calls? Well, there we go. I don't feel so bad about making them wait now, or they got so frustrated for fifteen minutes. There will be another, more opportunity further in the meeting. So at this point, we'll just continue. And, and everybody wants to speak again, it looks like. So why don't I go around the room? Counselor Zelka, why don't you go?
Thank you very much, Chair. Appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I've heard the word guidelines being mentioned over here, and I've heard the word, no, guidelines over here and policies mentioned over here. Are they the same things, or is there something else? Because I, the guidelines are apparently going to be published with the bylaw, but, but they're reliant on guidelines.
I'm going to go to Ms. Hopkins on this one, or Ms. Rella, do you want to jump in? You both reached for your button, but you've spoken more.
We're very good wingmen. So the policy is the policy that council already adopted. So there was the committee and commission policy that was adopted. How long ago, Deb? Quite recent?
Yeah, end of July.
End of July, before we recessed for the summer. And then the guidelines are companion documents that staff are currently working on.
Great. If I may continue. So is the assumption that the guidelines will be published with the proceed, new procedures bylaw, and they will all come together with us in one package and all go live at the same time?
Ms. Rella?
Ideally, yes, but we don't want to make the guidelines part of the adoption of the procedure bylaw. So we can make the timing happen at the same time. Council could endorse those guidelines, but there's, they're an operational piece that feeds into the governance of the bylaw. And so the bylaw, if we actually made it part of the bylaw, and we wanted to change a guideline because we found something clunky, we'd have to go through that whole process, the notification, all that sort of stuff. Whereas if we keep the guidelines separate and as companion documents that council endorses rather than adopts, then it's a different, it gives us more flexibility and agility to refine if necessary.
I, I, I may, I get it. It's kind of like a regulations in the act, and you're basically, one's easier to change, the other one's harder. So if the timing is, is happening at the same time, then when I read the procedures bylaw and I see that it looks like there's no public engagement, but in the guidelines, it says there is public engagement here, as long as they're going together, I'm, I feel better. But if, but if, but if there's going to be a period of time where this is live and that's not live, I'm not sure how to feel about that, because it's sort of like a period of time where there's, where the public's not allowed to talk, it seems.
Ms. Rella?
So while they will have different ways of going live on the ground, if you will, we'll make sure that timing makes sense and it comes forward together. So we wouldn't want, you're absolutely correct, Counselor Zelka. We wouldn't want a bylaw out there that refers to minute guidelines if we don't have those guidelines in place. So we're currently wrestling with all five pieces right now, and we'll, we'll bring those back for council's endorsement.
Thank you. Counselor Apple, did you want anything? Counselor Patterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points I would, I'd like to raise while we're going through the document. Under section fifteen, we talk about the councillor's roles in, as acting mayors, and nothing intended by this mayor, but I did put the, forward the, the question to staff, and I'd like to at least bring it out for discussion at this meeting about what happens in the event that the office of the mayor becomes vacant for the duration of council's term. I've not contemplated anything, but this is, this, this, this is just, you know, it, it is procedural.
Should I be, should I be nervous by the look of hopefulness in her face as she's saying this? Ms. Hopkins?
Thank you, your worship. I was quicker on my button that time. So that process is clearly laid out in the Local Government Act. So if the office of the mayor becomes vacant, it tells us in, under section two twenty, exactly what we must do. That would end up having somebody appointed in the interim, and, and by law, by election would be pursued depending upon the timing of that vacancy.
Thank you, Ms. Hopkins. Counselor Patterson? I'm happy to come back to you if you wish, if not.
Yeah, no, I, just, it was raised by other members of council and, and also a little bit by yourself, Mayor. But again, coming back to the issue of the ability of a chair to call a meeting, of course, as liaison to Heritage, I think of this, because the Heritage Commission provides great value to the community and making recommendations to, to council about applications. So that, that's one clear and distinctive role that they play. But in addition, there are often issues or different concepts that are generated by BC Heritage, or Heritage BC, the provincial body. And it is very important to the commission to have the ability to, to raise those issues and have discussion on how, if or how they may impact this community, and how the, how the commission will come forward with recommendations on those, on, on items of that nature. But sometimes I, I do understand it's, it's a resource, resourcing problem, but I think that that is, is something I'd just like to have some clarification on. How, how would we work through that process?
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Ms. Rella?
Thank you, your worship. So I think there's a couple of things we could do with that, Counselor Patterson. So I think we'd want to make sure that role was clearly reflected in the mandate of the commission. Again, council endorses the meeting schedule for its advisory bodies. You do resource us for one meeting a month. So if additional meetings were called, there is, there is an impact. But I, I think we would do our very best to say, if there was something time sensitive or urgent, we would absolutely facilitate an extra meeting. The clause is in the bylaw simply because if you had the opposite problem, where you had a chair who wanted to call a meeting every week, you need a mechanism where you can actually do a check and balance. So again, it isn't to say we're trying to, to, to you know, ruin the opportunity for an advisory body to come together on, on a matter that needs their attention. It's really that, how do we, how do we cap it if necessary, if we, if we had an overly enthusiastic chair? So I think, again, it's that bit of balancing act. You have one meeting a month, with the exception of August and December, I believe. And if other meetings were requested and it was doable and necessary, we would absolutely make sure that, that happened. So again, it's just about creating the bylaw in a way that allows us to have a discussion. And I, I, I think, I think we've achieved that. So again, I think it goes back to intention.
Thank you. And if I can just expand on that. In twenty nineteen, when I attended the Heritage Conference, there had been roundtables around the province. There was a lot of information generated out of those roundtables. And other communities are already moving forward on, on taking some of the information that was, that came out of those meetings and are, are using it to enhance programs or develop new programs. And so certainly, you know, being the council liaison and being the person to attend the, the conference and bring forward, here's the list of things that I would like to see us working on. I, I feel compelled to, to also be able to provide the vehicle by which we can do that.
Ms. Rella?
And I think it's a really good point, Counselor Patterson, because if you come back from a conference like that, and there are resulting initiatives, you wouldn't actually take that directly to the commission. You would actually bring that to the council table. Council would say, we absolutely want our commission working on that. You'd provide direction to the commission, and staff would facilitate that happening. So again, it's that idea of, of role clarity and reporting. And I think one of the things we can really do to better serve our volunteers is to clarify those flows of communication. And, and I, I'm hoping the procedure bylaw does that. I'm hoping we can firm that up again with the terms of reference in the mandate, because I could see you wanting to build that into the mandate, to say, you know, based on council direction, there might be initiatives that result from the Heritage Commission that council wants to action. So if it can be done without additional resourcing required or any of those things, I think, I think it's something you'll want to flag for when you look at those terms of reference.
Thank you, Counselor Patterson. Anything else? Okay, thanks. Counselor Green?
Excuse me, to, just to expand a little bit on, on Counselor, on Counselor Patterson's point, the Heritage Commission also has a role of promoting heritage and networking with homeowners about the advantages of registration, designation, that kind of thing. And I think that's, that should be somehow reflected as well in their mandate, because that, that may not involve meetings, but it, it's an important part of the work they do, and it is about community education. So I think that's, that's also a piece that we shouldn't forget. And it is unique perhaps to that committee or that commission. But just moving on, I just wanted to make a few comments at the beginning.
Counselor Green, can we just, just, I think.
Oh, we're just doing questions?
No, no, that's good. No, no, keep going. I just, you did raise that point. I think it's a really good point. And something we have to undermandate. I think one of the things that, hearing some of the concerns of the Heritage Commission, and, and, you know, I was a liaison, you were liaison, Counselor Patterson was liaison, we've all, there's a fair bit of experience here liaising with the Heritage Commission. There are probably some things we can manage. There are probably some things we can manage in a, in a structural way here that will allow for the land use pieces to meet all of the qualifications of the, of the Local Government Act and our best practices, but still allow some of that more ad hoc, maybe in partnership with the foundation or some other pieces that are not so dictated by the pieces. So I'm actually really excited about that chance to work with the Heritage Commission to come up with those, because I think we have to be clear on the land use ones, but all those other pieces, there are mechanisms for that. And I think that's really an important piece of, that education piece is the, is probably 90% of the success we have with Heritage is getting people to see it as a positive and to celebrate it. So, thank you. Anyway, just wanted to just let you know that I recognize that completely, and it's absolutely an important part of that discussion. I don't know if you had anything else to add to that?
Thank you, Mayor.
It was really just recognizing there is opportunity in examining how the commission functions and how the society functions and how there are different rules that apply to those bodies, and how can you maximize the flexibility that the foundation has available to it? So it's interesting because there's so much similarity in membership. So I think there are some opportunities there that we'll come back to council to discuss.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilor Green.
Oh, thank you. Just through you to Mr. Anderson, just wanting to know, you had referred to major applications and neighborhood consultation by the applicant. Will that be a requirement by the municipality? Or how will that, how will you ensure that that kind of consultation occurs? What are the expectations? Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
The method we would, we would use was we would certainly include that in our application process, flow charts, and also our discussions with applicants when they were coming forward. But we would also, I think, assist in the, in the sense that we'd provide some guidance and perhaps a document on how those are managed and how they're set up. So I think we'd include it in our land use application process and in our procedures and the documents that we provide to applicants in the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson.
I'll just make my brief comments and then I think I'm finished. Just quickly to Councilor Appleton's point about the public participation, it's a huge part of what we do and I value it greatly, as he does. I think we all do, in fact. And so when I was going through the document, I had some guiding principles for myself that I was, I was reciting in my head. One was the importance of public voice in all of this process. It's extremely important, especially in a small community, and the fact that we always say that, that council, local government, is closest to the people it serves. And I know that sometimes we're very close. And so we're very aware of how, I think, all of us in our own ways are very aware of how, how the public responds and how they feel about things generally. So I think it's important that we don't forget the public voice in all of this. And it's organic, the community is organic, we're organic. So I think we have the room and flexibility, the room to move and be flexible. And how important all of us said community engagement really is. So I want to keep that front and center in my own mind. And I had questions, you know, is this too prescriptive? And are we overly bureaucratic in our approach? I think tonight you've explained why there, that there needs to be these kinds of safeguards. They have legal implications, information implications, and role and responsibility implications. So I appreciate that. And all, I think my question for myself, how best do we achieve the end goal, which is good local governance? And I think we're certainly on the way to achieving that. And finally, flexibility was another word that kept coming up for me. And I noticed in your presentation and in the document, there are places where there are blank sections. But also, I think that I interpreted that as the ability to adjust and to pivot when we have to and, and to change these, these mechanics when we need to. Again, basing it on that, on that community input that's so important for all of us. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Green. I skipped over myself, but I had just one very minor question. On the order of proceedings in business, I really appreciate the little asterisks that sort of highlight where, where the public are putting their input into. It makes it nice and clear on this. Under new business, it's got an asterisk under council. So this is 23.213. I'm just wondering, is that true? I'm thinking of, if we had new business at a council meeting, we wouldn't normally have public input under new business risen, would we? Or is that just a possibility of public input, depending on the nature of the new business?
Your Worship, I think that that's, that's a possibility. I think it depends on the nature of the business, exactly that. I think there are times where that will be a call that happens. But I think when we were preparing this in general, we had believed that there would be opportunity for input. Looking at Ms. Vella here to jump in.
That is my recollection, Your Worship. We can turn our lens to that again as we go through the final review to make sure that makes sense. It might even be a qualifier to it, so. But it's a good, it's a good catch. I'm trying to think of different scenarios and I'm thinking sometimes it might work and sometimes it might not. So it's a good point. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was just caught my eye as a procedural piece. Thank you. Sorry, Councilor Brithwaite, I thought I'd jump in there as well. Go ahead.
No worries. Thank you. Just to go on something that Councilor Green brought up and Mr. Anderson, you answered in regards to input. And you said that, I think Councilor Green asked if there was an opportunity for an applicant to, or do we ask applicants to kind of reach out to the community? And did you mean applicants of just like a, a single family dwelling or applicants of a bigger, a bigger building?
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, the focus is on major applications, so it would not be for single family dwelling building permit and those, those permit related applications. It would be more on the rezonings and more the multifamily, the commercial, those types of applications.
And the reason I ask is because in one of the letters, it did talk about, you know, it says they appreciate that the provincial legislation says that when first considering a bylaw with development applications, council is not to involve the public in that process. That does not prevent applicants to do so as a best practice and good neighbor principle. If not in its, in the bylaw itself, this sort of approach could be a policy statement or guideline. And so I'm wondering, I guess, if, if, for example, if I was building a new single family dwelling and I came for my, my, I came to the building department to get permission, would that be something that would be in the list of things that we would suggest to even someone building a single family dwelling to do is to talk to their neighbors or, because I think, I think that comes across for some people, but not others.
Mr. Anderson?
If I may, I think there's certainly value when somebody's proposing to do something on their property that they speak with their neighbors. It gets a little bit more complicated for a municipality to, to start to require, for example, if you want to build a home, that you would contact your neighbors. I would suggest that we can encourage that in some less formal fashion, but it's pretty difficult for us to be requiring somebody who's coming in for a building permit to go and contact their neighbors. We can certainly suggest that.
And thank you. And I wasn't asking as a requirement, I was just asking if, you know, if that would be something like you could say, hey, it might be a good idea for you to go and check with your neighbors or talk to your neighbors or whatever. So that's fine. And then the only other thing I had was, there was a suggestion that under 2.0 definitions, that the term community engagement or public engagement could be added. And I'm wondering if that's something that would be a good idea, to be able to add something like that in there, just as a definition around community engagement or public engagement?
I might just perhaps have as a takeaway, because I think it probably needs a bit of thought in terms of how to define that, if possible. Because there may be some legislative portions of that as well and not want to step on the, between public hearing and other sort of forms of public engagement.
Your Worship, if, I think it's also why we refer to the IAP2 framework in our staff reports. So, because sometimes you're consulting, sometimes you're informing, and sometimes you're collaborating if it's an OCP. So again, public engagement or opportunities for public input can take a lot of different forms, which is why you're seeing so many definitions such as a delegation, a presentation, a public hearing. So we can think about it, but it's, it is interesting and, but that desire that council expressed is why we actually started to incorporate the IAP2 statement in the staff reports, to hope that would assist the public.
Are you finished, Councilor Brithwaite? I have Councilor Appleton and then Councilor Green, and then Councilor Zelka.
Thank you, Your Worship. And just picking up very quickly on something that Councilor Brithwaite just mentioned. Just to confirm from staff's perspective, the idea of incorporating the information meetings into the land use application process, that lands in the land use procedures by law. And I'm hearing that that's potentially a, not minor, but at least a manageable amendment to the land use procedures by law, and that's where that would be contained. So just, that's sort of question confirmation number one. And then I guess the second part of that is to say, based on, and I appreciate Mr. Anderson's comments on this, is there a need or would it be desirable to revisit the language of the land use procedures by law as it pertains to engagement of the public more generally to kind of reflect what the current expectation for, for engagement is? And I'm sorry, that's putting staff on the spot, and I know that's a big topic. But is there space for modernizing that? And I'm not saying that within six months or anything like that, but just as we talk about the land use procedures by law more generally.
Thank you, Councilor Appleton. Ms. Vella?
So first point, I'm not going to commit to that would be in the land use procedures by law. We're currently working with some sources of information, resources, if you will, to say what's the best way to approach the requirement for that applicant hosted meeting. And so we haven't said it's necessarily going to be in that by law, but we have said we're going to bring that piece of the puzzle back. We're currently working on that analysis to say what's the best way to do it. And the second part of the question was, I believe that's already in the department work plan for modernizing that land use procedures by law. So I don't know if Bruce wants to add more timeline to that.
Mr. Anderson, do you have a more detailed timeline at this point, or is it just in the works at this point?
Yes, Chair, we do have that in our, in our progress right now, and it's for this year. So we're hoping to have that reviewed this year. And if I, if I may note, we certainly will have language in our, in our process descriptions and the application materials that we provide that relates to methods of public engagement. The information meeting, there'd be a guide on how to, how to affect that as well. But as Ms. Vella mentions, in terms of the procedures by law itself, there are some matters that we may be able to include in there and others we may have as sort of supplementary information that we use in our process.
Thank you. Can I just do a follow-up to Councilor Appleton's question though? Because I think one of the things that I think we need to be clear about, what we're talking about here is a more formalized request of these big applications to do this piece. And there's, what happens sometimes is there's, people do it on their own volition early on in the process before they have a fully formulated design. They will go out and meet with members of the public and, and do what they feel is their due diligence of, of that sort of first cut before they even develop their, their application. What we're talking about, as I understand it, is really, once they've come in and they've gone through back and forth with staff to try and get to something that would meet the technical requirements, that would be at the point where we would require them to go out and make sure they have that public input piece. Is that, is that, am I reading that right? That this is separate from what they would voluntarily do early, pre-application processes would be essentially, once they started the application process? Is that fair?
Yeah, that's correct. And as I may have noted earlier, it would be on the way to the advisory committee point that that would occur. So as you note, following staff review and back and forth and possible modification of, of the application. And then they could have something a little bit more certain to bring to an information meeting with the, with the neighborhood or with the public.
Very good. And just for my clarification then, so that would still allow them time to take that input and make any modifications they wanted to make with staff, work through that before it went to, even the first of the committees or commissions that would be looking at it. So what would be going to them would be a result of working with staff and that first cut with the public to make sure they at least can address concerns raised or ideas that are raised. Is that correct?
Yeah, and that is certainly one of the advantages of having such a meeting at that point in the process.
Right. Thank you. That helps my clarification. I have Councilor Green and then Zelka.
Thank you. And just two quick things. One, just to follow up on the, on the consultation process for small lot development. Is it, I mean, I know it's informal, we can't require it, but when an applicant, I'm thinking of where you have a small lot, small home, then a large home built next door, and there isn't any meaningful sort of neighbor, neighbor to neighbor consultation. In the spirit of that kind of, encouraging that kind of behavior among neighbors, is that stated anywhere in any of our documents on small lot development or single family home development or improvements? Is there, is there a spirit of, you know, consulting with neighbors is best practice or not?
Mr., Ms. Anderson?
Yes, thank you. What we do have the ability to do is what's referred to as intensive or infill development permit areas. And so we can capture some guidelines and some process on, on small lot development, and we can define that and have that. Well, that's actually a development permit process, so it's different than simply a building permit process. But that's an example of where you actually have an identified defined small lot. And I, I think perhaps you might be referring to just perhaps an existing smaller home on a smaller lot, but then there's a larger home. And we, we have just the opportunity to encourage, similarly, as I mentioned earlier, with other single family development building permits, we don't have the ability to, to require that, or we don't have a permit process to, to put that into.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Councilor Green?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, my observation of this is that a lot of good developers do it, and a lot of ones that may not be so familiar with the neighborhood or starting out don't do that, that level of just awareness of the neighbors, so.
Just to follow up, is that a matter of routine to encourage neighbors to, to undertake that kind of neighbor to neighbor if possible or appropriate? Is that something we do as, as a department routinely with applicants? Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
What I can advise is that with building permits, we often receive the application and it's, it's completed. And, and so we don't, we don't actually have the opportunity because they've already gone through their, their design process and they're submitting the application. And that's, that's the nature of building permit processes.
Councilor Green?
Just one last question on this. What, at that stage though, would it, do you encourage them to inform their neighbors or not?
Mr. Anderson?
I would say, in my experience, it's, it's not, not, not a practice. I mean, if an issue comes up, it may be that you should probably talk to your neighbor, say a tree issue or something like that. But, but it's, I don't, I wouldn't suggest it's a practice. I mean, we're, we're basically busy taking care of the technical review issues around building permits.
Thank you very much. And the only reason I raise this, because, because development and construction and demolition have intensified over the last, certainly the last 10 years in Oak Bay. This comes up more and more often now where neighbor to neighbor relationships may be good, they may not be so good, but it's really hard when there are encroachments, both visually, shadows, light, and so on. I know that people are impacted and, you know, they don't feel that they've had a fair, a fair hearing on how they're impacted. So how, you know, how do they do that? If they don't have a good working relationship with the neighbor, that's, that's a shame. But I'm just thinking as a best practice, as a spirit of encouraging good neighborly, you know, behavior around a major application for a large home, for instance. It's helpful just to, to at least plant the seed, but I appreciate your-
And I just want to make, we're getting drifting a little far off our procedures by law at this point.
I know, I know.
I think, I take the spirit of that. I've always wished that we could make a bylaw for people to be nicer. That would just be, that'd be an excellent one to pass. But, oh, Councilor, Mr. Anderson?
I was just reminded that I have and we have seen sort of good neighbor programs and guides that other communities have produced. So that's something that may have potential that we could, it's usually a broader piece, but it could also speak to if you are undertaking a development of your property, this might be a, so we, there are, there are tools, educational tools, information tools that, that are available to us. So that might be an opportunity.
Okay, thank you. And my last point, under meetings, we did the, the special committee, the home meetings, neighborhood meetings last, was it last year? We did the the special committee, the whole meetings, neighborhood meetings last, was it last year or two years ago? I can't remember now. Last November, I think. And they 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 played well in the community. I think each of the areas that we we went to. By the by the final one, there was a great turnout and people were really positive. Do we have the ability to do that with this procedural by law to maintain those those meetings? I mean, I'm hoping they will be annual, depending on the pandemic, of course, but I hope we don't lose them in the shuffle. Thanks.
Ms. Hopkins?
Thank you, your worship. Staff would obviously take direction from council if that's council's desire to have those meetings again. But yes, you have the flexibility within this procedure by law in order to hold those. Like we did last year, those were special committee of the holes, and we would continue to hold them in that manner in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I have Councilor Zelka next.
Thank you, Chair. Relating to Councilor Green's comment, I would definitely support the good neighbor policy of some sort. I did notice in the in the correspondence, I mentioned of the the SCAN community network. SCAN seems to have figured it out. I mean, they're maybe it's because they're large enough, they have fairly active neighborhood associations that they can knit together. And I've often wished that we could have the same thing here, that we could, in some ways, delegate and provide a way for that good neighborly input or simply at least neighborly input. But in in absence of that, at least some sort of a brochure or a handout to the public would be helpful. But my question actually did relate to these town halls or the meetings that we had, they were referred to as special committee of the holes. I don't see the concept of a special committee of the hole mentioned anywhere in this proposed by law. I see committee of the hole and special and council meetings and special council meetings, but not special committee of the holes. Where is it in the by law, please?
Thank you, Councilor Zelka. Ms. Vella or Ms. Hopkins?
If unless Ms. Hopkins can lay her finger on that section, we'll take a review to make sure that's included. But the intention was because of especially because of those town halls, we want or a workshop such as tonight's where we take a big project and we don't want to put this as part of the agenda. So we certainly will prioritize that. And if it needs to be fleshed out a bit more in that by law, we'll catch that. Thank you, Councilor Zelka.
Yeah, and related to that.
Before before you say related to it, Ms. Hopkins had her finger on the button. So I thought it was if she has an answer, we'll take it now.
Thank you, your worship. Under section 13 of the the draft procedure by law here is a notice of special or closed meetings. And it does provide provisions for calling committee of the hole, a special committee of the hole.
Do we need any special procedural pieces for that? Or is that just assumed to be because it's special, it's special and and the rules are set separately from the regular?
Your worship, there's legislated requirements around calling any sort of special special meetings. So we would be following those. And then we've also got provisions within this this by law here to also allow us to call any type of special, whether that be council or committee of the hole or advisory body.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Zelka?
So I presume you're referring to 13.3 that talks about a special or closed council or committee of the hole.
13.1, I think.
13.1, that's correct.
13.1. May I ask, what is a closed committee of the hole meeting?
Something we've never done. Mr. Smith Hopkins?
Your worship, typically, committee of the hole meetings aren't closed. Typically, you would go into a closed meeting to make a decision of some sort. And committee of the hole is not a decision making body, so you would typically only have a special council. I don't want to say you would never have that because I can't, I can't think of a reason why you would, but maybe there's a reason in the future.
All right. Just the way it's worded, it to my eye looks odd, but maybe I could suggest some wordsmithing in there later.
Well, if I may, I think closed meetings are closed meetings of of a regular of a of a council meeting or committee of the hole. I think it would only come in, it's probably been taken from another jurisdiction, because if you're in a committee of the hole like tonight and say something came up and said that actually requires some legal information, we could adjourn this to in camera, go to an in camera committee of the hole meeting and come back out again. I think would be probably the only place I could think of that coming up as a piece, but I don't even know. Anyway, it will have a look at that again from staff. Thanks.
Well, so thank you very much. So so with respect to the to, I see the word special there. And then I many words later was committee of the hole. So now I understand where that comes up. So if I, and I appreciate that being there. If I could also get a clarification as to the intent of the question periods during committee of the hole. Because I was imagining that might be an intention to maybe reduce the pressure of a need for a town hall, I'm imagining. What was the intent for question period, please?
Ms. Hopkins?
Thank you, your worship. The intention of that was actually to move what was already existing as the public input or the public participation period at council. We moved that to committee of the hole where the purpose of that meeting is to have more discussion, more less decision making, more formal. Sorry, more free flowing dialogue during committee of the hole. And so we thought that it actually made more sense for the committee of the hole or council sitting as committee of the hole to receive that that information and facilitate that dialogue at that time. We also expanded it so that it could be a little broader and a little longer.
Well, I very much appreciate it being there. Section 20 is what I'm referring to. It does appear to be a bit limited in terms of what the public and I guess council is allowed to talk about. So I imagine the the chair will be very busy during our question period, ensuring that we're only talking about certain things. Is that the intention?
Yeah, can you just maybe give a quick overview of why those restrictions are there? It'd be helpful. Ms. Hopkins?
Your worship, so some of those restrictions are there because they're legal requirements. You know, there's certain topics that we simply can't discuss, such as ongoing by law enforcement investigation or something that's happened in a closed meeting that hasn't that council hasn't provided a rise in report for. There's certain, just quickly going through this again. There are certain things that have been acted upon irreversibly. There could be something that there's no like a decision of the, I don't know, actually, I'm starting to get away from this because I'm trying to remember off the top of my head.
Well, they're all listed in section 21 and for detail.
So much of these is is that we just simply are unable to discuss at, you know, we wouldn't be at liberty to have a free flowing dialogue on at that time on those matters.
Your worship?
Go ahead, Ms. Vella.
Could I also add, so this is actually reflective of what we should be doing now, right? So you wouldn't, you wouldn't want your public discussing that or expecting an answer on something that we just really couldn't legally respond to. And I think, again, it's sort of the idea that I don't think this is actually a change. It's just more defining the practice so that if it started to happen, then the chair has a tool to say, actually, that's a restricted item. And and again, we recognize that there's going to be public education pieces that go along with this. Like we'll probably start to put some things at the presenter's podium, like if we start to develop some tools, cheat sheets for the mayor, whatever, whatever it looks like. But again, this is a, this isn't about tricking anyone or hanging them out. This is really about saying, how do we, how do we enable council to do its best governance and decision making? And how do we allow the public to provide meaningful input where it's best applied?
And the last thing for me tonight, I'm sure, I promise. If this all feels too restrictive, I guess we could just move a motion to say, we want to have another town hall or whatever we're going to call it, a special committee of the hole, and then try and slot it in somehow. And hopefully, it won't take a year to organize. But if we if we would like to have more frequent town halls, we just need to pass motions and and provide, I guess, the budget to allow it to happen. Is that that's a fundamental aspect?
Yeah, absolutely. Just as you saw play out last November. You know, we did that within existing budget. I don't believe council funded additional reserves for that. We managed it within workload. It was something that mattered to council, it mattered to the public. And we worked really hard to pull that off. So we took away some lessons learned, again, with that eye to the long game and continuous improvement. Staff, staff's here to serve. And if council wishes to return to those types of meetings once the pandemic is over, we're happy to make those happen for you.
I'll just make one observation. And again, if anybody's at home watching and has no thought of a question or a comment, you want to call in, you can call 250-598-3311. And I'll make that last call. So it sounds like we're going to get close to wrapping up here. I just want to point out that some of the other jurisdictions in our community I know are in our region have actually moved away from having the public input pieces at the council meetings in general, because they found they get a little unruly and hard to control. I think this is strikes a pretty nice balance in the sense that it gives a pretty long and fulsome opportunity. I would always encourage anybody who really wants to talk to council or get an answer, just email us. Typically, it's within 24 hours, we'll be able to get back to you with an answer on something. And it's usually more fulsomely than we can possibly do in a meeting. So always available, all members of council have their phone numbers and emails posted and are very, very accessible. So if there's questions, by all means, public should just reach out to us or to or to the municipality at any time. It's not, you do not have to wait for this particular item to come here and talk to us. That is not a requirement. It's just an opportunity to participate in. So that's, I think, the other important part. Before I go to Councilor Green, I just want to give a chance, is there anybody on the line, Ms. Morton?
No calls.
Okay, well, we're batting zero. Councilor Green and then Councilor Patterson, did you have your hand up as well?
Just a quick suggestion or question. Would it be possible to put at least the slide on the website that you presented on the elements of decision making? I think this would be helpful for the public, and I think in our attempt to educate and inform, any pieces from that slide presentation would be really helpful, I think, and have it on our website when we're talking about process. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Patterson.
Thank you, Mayor. One very small piece that I thought should prob maybe be added to the the index part two. We talk about the schedule, location and notice of meeting, but not the time. I'm wondering if we could add time to that list. It's small, but I think it's it's also important to people. And and I know we have been, we've had, we've had quite a number of meetings this year and we have been changing schedules a bit. And so I think that is probably what has precipitated some of the the comments about time is what do we do about time? And and so that would be something good to add. Also, in going through this, and I know I I talked to to staff earlier. And this is my first experience of going through a procedural by law. And I probably did not completely understand everything that was needed to to come together in this. So I certainly do appreciate all of the work by staff. It has been, it has been a major, a major undertaking in getting to this. There are references within the framework of this document to to other documents that are still needed so that we are completing the loop on on managing how we are having procedures for council, but also committees and commissions. We talked briefly about terms of reference. I know that in there, we talk about in the document, the acting mayors and we need a draft acting mayor policy. We don't really have that. Perhaps other members of council are more familiar than I am with that. So I may be highlighting it as more important. And guidelines for district minutes. So there's a number of documents that also go together with this to complete our our loop of communication and making sure that we are, we are all moving in the same in step on the path. And so do we have a way of capturing or has that been captured in a in a way so that we we keep, we track these other pieces that are needed? And so that we have a reminder and perhaps a work plan of of how we will get through those steps and what the expectation should be?
Ms. Vella?
I think one of the things that I continuously look at as my normal course of business, and certainly council reinforced it in your strategic priorities, is operational excellence. And so as we move to update our policies, our bylaws, our processes, I think you've seen some great traction in the last couple of years, even when I watched the budget process happen. And we're repealing bylaws from financial bylaws from like the 50s and 60s and things like that. I think you've got a lot of traction going. I don't think we're ever going to get there, but certainly if you, in the immediate short term, I should qualify that. So for example, as part of my lens to best operational practice, I currently am working on a draft enacting mayor policy because I know that's that's a gap for you. So I think the idea is if if there's something that you feel is missing, you can discuss it with me to see if it's already on my radar. Am I already actioning it under that operational excellence lens? Is it something that isn't on my radar that you might actually want to to bring to the council table to provide direction to staff through me? Whatever that looks like. But again, I think, I think we can streamline the bureaucracy if we can just have a conversation. It's easier for me to say, yeah, that one's already on my radar. I've got five guidelines pending for you. Building and planning already or have slotted in the land use by law. It's easy for us to just have those conversations. But if you come to me and say, I think this is important, and I go, ooh, that's not on my radar, then we can talk about how to get direction to staff.
So one of the things I can think of that would help with that was on page, on the fifth slide of the of the of the presentation, it talks about the public correspondence guidelines, agenda, those pieces. You know, maybe just as we, as this comes back in the report, maybe just highlight those in some general estimates of when they would come. Or if there's a specific item, like, you know, we will address the early, you know, public meeting process, that will be separate, but that would be by this time or something, just so that there's some clarity of of some of those key items. I think that would probably address most of the the pieces that we would have as a, to answer the public and the council's questions on those. Because I think the reasonable asks, okay, we know they're coming, but is it 10 years, two years, two months? What does that look like? Right? So.
Yeah, absolutely. And with these pieces, your worship, we have committed to bringing these forward at the same time as the procedure by law. So that's council's timeline for this, these particular pieces.
Fantastic. Thank you. I don't see any, oh, Councilor Appleton.
Sorry, your worship. Thank you. Just very quickly, I just wanted to confirm, section 29 relates to general rules of conduct. And it describes sort of what is, you know, that there are certain types of conduct that are not acceptable. And then this is, this is a valued section. It it it's sort of implied by the way this is written that there's interpretation here. You know, in terms of expressing a negative opinion, speaking disrespectfully, that requires an interpretation. So it, I'm assuming that that means the chair adjudicates that, whether or not that has been, that section's been contravened. But but it doesn't specifically mention that it's the chair that that plays that role. So I've kind of dug around a little bit and and I don't see a specific reference. And I mean, I would just take as, if I didn't, if I didn't read into it, I would just assume that whoever's the chair would would make that call. But is there just, can can staff clarify that point?
I'll defer to Ms. Hopkins, but I believe under 29.1 subsection eight, adhere to the rulings of the mayor or chair and voting decisions pursuant to this by law, the chair might also rule behavior not appropriate to chambers. Again, I think it is subjective, Councilor Appleton, but I think we all know as people intrinsically when something is happening that's offside and not respectful. And and the point is, is that we would rely on the chair. If the chair wasn't calling it, certainly council members can call it, I can call it a staff liaison and an advisory committee, because it's not just about protecting staff. You want to protect the people in the gallery. You want to protect applicants. You want to protect people presenting to you or advisory bodies. So again, as people, we all know when something is offside. And again, emotions and passion is high, especially around land use applications. And there's a lot of diverse opinions. I think this council has a lot to be proud of with making these chambers safe for having diverse opinions represented fairly and respectfully.
I'll just say from a chair's perspective, the I rely to a certain degree on on points of privilege. So the any member of council or staff can raise a point of privilege, which basically addresses those those issues in the chamber. I would rule on that. So if if there was a point of privilege that was that was seen to be inappropriate, I would rule on that and say, I find in you in that favor. Any member of this body can challenge, not the staff, but the the members of the of the council can challenge that ruling. And that immediately goes to a vote, whether or not my ruling would be sustained. So it's both the chair and the council's responsibility to capture those. I am fully aware that I will not always capture moments. I will not hear the tone or the slate or things are taken poorly at at various times. So by all means, the effort of maintaining the the timber in this council of being a safe So by all means, the effort of maintaining the timber in this council of being a safe place and stuff is reliant. I do rely on all of you, and you've done that in the past, and I expect you to do it again as things are flagged there. So just, you know, that's where all this is a team together to do that. But that is my, my responsibility, or whoever's chairing a meeting. And then, but the, the whole body has that responsibility and can raise that through points of privilege. So that'd be my observation of that. And that's captured in here, but also in Robert's rules, pretty clearly in terms of how that's managed. Thanks. That's Council Green.
Just on that point that Council Appleton raised, and you answered so well. What about behavior outside the formal meeting? So behavior in, you know, just informally after, no, no, I'm not looking at anybody. I was looking at the room generally, but outside the formal meeting process, I think we also share a responsibility to, to be aware of behavior like that. I mean, sometimes, you know, applicants will spar with council members after the meeting ends, as you're leaving the room, that kind of thing. So just, we can't do that now because of pandemic. That, that is a safeguard, actually. But I think, how do we, what is the best way of dealing with behavior that is inappropriate after the meeting ends? Was a question. And I think we all share that responsibility, but sometimes it's helpful.
I will say that's a very rare occasion, but, but definitely it can happen. Ms. Vrilla?
So respectful workplace legislation is applicable, whether it's in these chambers, you know, on the way out the door. How it could happen at a booth somewhere, it could happen at a town hall. So the idea again, that good governance, good decision making, respectful workplace legislation. Again, this isn't about being oppressive or constraining. This is just about encouraging the good and respectful behavior that we all just need to, to perform our best and to feel safe in the course of our duties, or our volunteerism, or our elected official role. So again, it's back to that relationship building, a partnership. If the chair missed a, a something that, that happened again, it's not, the idea isn't to leap on the chair. The idea is to support the chair and to say, oh, you know, we might just want to. It's even, it's even how we encourage people to present their opinion, whether it's on a procedure bylaw, or it's on a land use application. You can weigh in with great value on all, a whole wide variety of topics, but you do it respectfully, and it's better received. You get better results all the way around.
There we go. Thank you. Any other discussion here? So I just want to raise up something that Council Patterson touched on, and that is the question of meeting times. It's in this bylaw, days and times, not something I want to tackle tonight at all. But I think deserves probably a bit more, you know, consideration, because we haven't teased out, you know, is there difference of time? And we touch, we have public hearings on Thursdays now. But our committee of the holes and council meeting is going to be the same time. And they, there are, I think it's worthy for us to consider that. And if that's, if that is, if we want to look at that a bit more holistically, I think it might be appropriate to have a direction from this table to ask staff to come back with what are the options? And we can deal with that as a separate item, either to be tackled at the same time we adopt this bylaw, or perhaps just table for a future council, like next term or something like that, depending on what we, what we come up with. But I think it's worth having the conversation, because it does tie into all kinds of things. People's access to meetings, timeliness, impacts on staff, impacts on cascading effects of other committees and all those kind of things. So if we ever were to consider it, it's probably a good time now, because it would have a cascading impact in future. And I think it's worth looking at, but that's just my opinion. I don't want to do it tonight. I think it needs a staff report to kind of tease out what the possibilities are and what those things are. So I'll leave it to this body if they want to see that.
I will make a resolution then that we direct staff to consider times appropriate for the council and council meetings and committee of the whole meetings and public hearing meetings. I think that should suffice.
That should suffice, I think.
I'll second.
Seconded. Is there any discussion on that motion, Council Appleton?
Thank you, your worship. I would be in support of evaluating options. But I, and so it would be poor governance to not evaluate the options and what, what the implications of a time change might be, or changing those meetings would be. I guess I will just express my opinion well in advance that altering meeting times will have an impact, no matter which way you move them or how you alter them, it will have an impact on the accessibility of the process to different people. So no change to the current status quo will have a entirely positive and zero negative effect on transparency for council meetings. So that's just, that's just my opinion. I don't have a problem with evaluating the, the options at this stage of the game, but I'm just expressing my opinion on that well in advance.
A little pre, it's like a preview to a movie or something we're going to have there. That's, that's fair. And I think that would be, I can certainly see many hurdles to overcome, to make changes. But I think there are probably opportunities there as well, I'm assuming, but maybe I'm wrong. I think it's worth looking at. Any other discussion on that? Council Zelka?
With possibly a bit of an echo in the room to the previous comments. Those of us with children, those of us who, who have full-time other jobs that we have to contend with, you know, any change to the, to the hours will obviously impact those rather important considerations as well. So I do appreciate the fact that electronic participation is, is, is possible. And maybe if, if more council members were allowed to attend electronically, that then it might be easier for me in particular to be able to attend maybe at an earlier time, possibly.
Thank you, Council Zelka. And I think you raised a very good point that there are, and Council Appleton's subtext of that as well, the same thing. Those, any changes will have impact. Some people can make certain times, some people can't. It would affect who would run for council, probably based on that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of ramifications that we have to consider. I would not presume under this direction, if that's how council goes, or committee of the whole directs, to presume anything. I think there's a lot of thought, but I, I didn't want it to be part of this bylaw piece, because I thought there's way too many. First of all, we'd have a public hearing, and it'd be nothing about the time of and date. But also, I think it, it needs a bit more time and thought put into it than, than could be considered on the, on the meat and potatoes of the bylaw. So thank you for that, Council Patterson.
Yes, and I appreciate the, the comments by Council Appleton and Council Zelka. My intent is just to, that I think that it would be, it would, you know, it's really a critical piece to the procedural bylaw to be able to anchor a time, an established time. There may be exceptions to that in the future. And certainly, I'm not implying that the time should change from what it is in any way. I just think that it, it would be good that we cover off on that piece and we come to agreement, so that it can be handled with this. As our C O has instructed us, this can be altered in the future, should we, should we require that? So, but it would just be a final piece. And I think to put a document out where we have the location, the schedule and the location and the notice, and not include time, seems a little ambiguous to me. So I, that was the reason for my bringing it forward.
You know, I appreciate that. Just triggered my thought on that, that was something that deserves, I think, a little bit more fulsome discussion, and hadn't got to it here, obviously. So, so there's a motion just to ask, is staff comfortable with that motion to come back with?
Absolutely, your worship. And I think what we could provide back is an analysis of what our partners in the region are doing as well with their meeting times, that might also inform. As with any conversation, we're going to want to see what the, I imagine council will want to see what the, the public has to say on those ideas. And sometimes small shifts can create some pressure release valves without large pendulum swings. So again, if, if staff can just go collect some information and bring that back for council's discussion on the floor, that would be great.
Can I just, for my clarification, this would come back to committee of the whole? So this, the report and conversation would come back to the committee of the whole? Is that the intention?
Yeah, absolutely, your worship. And, and right now, we'll, we'll continue with the, the bylaw as proposed, which has the current date of Monday, the day of Monday and a start time of seven o'clock. One of the recommendations that we'd put forward was that we get council direction on the table two, attached to the memorandum. So we'd want to pull out a couple items based on the council discussion here. So we'd want to pull out changed day and time of council meetings and committee of the whole. So we'll bring back a standalone report on that. I was unclear on the idea of a standalone public hearing on the second Thursday of the month. Was council supportive of that as presented in the bylaw?
I think in general, yes. So why don't we include that in the draft?
Okay.
And, but maybe just flag it in the, in the report that comes back on the other meetings, because I can certainly see, contemplate if there were options there to move it to a Tuesday or a Wednesday, that maybe suddenly the Thursday might not actually work, you know, if you work through the cascade impact. So that's the only flag I would have for that one. Leave it in the existing bylaw and bring it back.
And then we should probably also pull out section nine, which would be establish a standalone meeting time and day for closed council meetings, with the ability to call special meetings as necessary. We'll pull that out and address that in the report as well. So that would remove items under the sections for ease, six to eight, which is the day and time of council meetings. We would leave in the standalone public hearing meetings. We would pull out section nine, which is a standalone meeting time and date for closed council meeting. Is there anything else that council wouldn't be comfortable with proceeding right now?
Give us a second to pull that, that section off.
Does everyone have table two handy? Okay, great.
Let's give you a chance to read through it. If there's anything else to flag, we'll do that at this time. Otherwise, we'll move it forward with those changes. And I'll ask one last time, if anybody's watching at home, and has, has anybody dialed in, Ms. Morton?
I'll just confirm with staff at the front reception.
Okay. And I'll make the offer 250-598-3311. And just for my clarification, when we, when this bylaw comes back with all the other augmented pieces, it will have first and second reading, and then chance for public input at that point as well. Is that, is that correct on this kind of bylaws, or does it do for second, third reading, and then move to a, to adoption at a later meeting?
Your worship, first three readings would be able to be considered together.
Okay, so it's a different, yeah, thank you. It's my, my clarification as a bylaw. Get so used to land use things, you forget the process for bylaws. I don't see any other flags being raised here by this body at this time, so that seems, ask Council Zelka?
Thank you. Just one more kick of the can. In terms of public being able to comment one more time, since it sounds like first, second, and third reading will happen very quickly. If this does get moved to council, when will the, will there be one more opportunity? I'm not quite sure I understood what the comments from staff.
Sure. So let's just get some clarification, because this has a few moving parts here in terms of other pieces being added in. So for contemplation, so everybody has.
Everybody's got the buttons lit up. Your worship, what I'd like to do really is to bring it back one more time to the committee of the holes, because the standalone companion pieces, it'll be the first time that anyone's gotten to look at it. And while it isn't part of the adoption process, I think we still need time to bring that back and introduce it. Again, we wouldn't have council approving those. We'd have council really receiving for information, which means you're endorsing them. But you could also recommend changes. So if there's a flag, it allows us to have a dialogue about why it's presented as such. And that would be my recommendation, is that you actually saw this one final time at committee of the whole, which also allows the public the opportunity. Because like I said, we had some really great comments on this, this product. Some of those comments did inform this, this presentation, and it'd be a great opportunity to reiterate.
Thank you, Ms. Vrilla. And I think, so the motion that we're looking for here is just to, is there any motion required? I mean, it's, if it, does it just come back to this table if we, or do you want a motion to, to return it to a future committee of the whole with, probably leave it that simply, so that there's changes, Ms. Hopkins?
Your worship, I just wanted to back up, because we have a motion that was moved and seconded, and we haven't called the question on it. And that was on the bringing back options of the date and time.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm like, what happened? This is what we need a procedures bylaw to fix me. That'll work. So the motion is on the table. Is there any other discussion about that motion? Not seeing any alcohol, the question, all those in favor, and nobody opposed, since everybody's hand went up. Is there, so we're back down to just basically what to do next with, with the main document. Ms. Hopkins, what is the appropriate, we have a recommendation here to recommend provide direction. So we've provided some direction. Does it, do you need a motion to ask to direct, to bring it back to a future committee of the whole?
Your worship, yes, let's make a resolution for council to direct staff to bring back the.
To incorporate the changes and bring back them.
Exactly. And bring the companion guidelines for review.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, thank you. Any discussion on that? Seeing any, I'll call the question then. All those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. I believe that, oh, Ms. Hopkins, something else?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to respond to Council Zelka's question as well. This, the council procedure bylaw is such a significant piece of regulation for how we do our business, that there, the province recognizes that. And there are requirements for us to do notification, so it's not something that we can just change in two meetings. And along with that is required notification, and then the opportunity for the public to provide input. So we can't just pass three readings without asking for public input.
That was sitting at the back of my mind, which is, I was like, I think, I thought we had to do some public, additional more formal public piece of this. So thank you very much for that clarification. Before we leave, I just want to express, we're still working on this document, but it's so close. And really appreciate all the work that's going on to make, to fill in the gaps that are not part of this, but are forming other portions. I would be remiss, since it's a public place, to have a chance to do it, not to thank all of the staff, and particularly Ms. Hopkins, who is leaving us shortly, and has been so instrumental in bringing this and many other pieces of the puzzle together. It's important, it's critical, frankly, for us to be a good governance body. And so this work will have, be a little, little legacy that you will leave behind here for us. So I just want to take that time to thank you for all the work that's gone into this. The attention to detail is, is fantastic, and the, and the results are, as heard from the questions here and pieces, obviously reflective of the appreciation of the quality of that work. So thank you for that, Ms. Hopkins. Thank you to all of the staff that have worked on it, but yay. And for your, and for your years of service here in the, in the municipality in general. So that's now officially on the record, so that's excellent. Thank you, everyone. And we just need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Moving seconded, thank you, all those in favor, opposed, non-opposed. Thank you very much. We'll see you all on Monday.